Mr. Chairman, I've got a grandson.
Well, congratulations.
At Turnbull Elementary.
Like granddad, like grandson.
Yeah, yeah.
At where?
At six o'clock, so I'm gonna cut out a little early. Maybe we'll be done with Bob's part, I don't know.
We'll be done by then.
Doubt it, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna call the Finance Committee to order, and this is the item number one, is the item that the mayor had spoke to us about at the last committee meeting, and Kevin was there and had discussion, and I think we pretty much asked him to start moving forward, so Bob, if you would like to address the committee on this, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Bob Wright with Cruz &amp; Associates. As you were mentioning, Kevin was at the last city council meeting, and Mayor, you had just some brief comments on what we were trying to achieve for y'all. We had shown y'all back in the fall, interest rates had dropped down, taxable rates, unlike tax exempt, had dropped down to where they were basically equal with what y'all have done in the past, and it opened up an opportunity on your 2012 sales tax issue to refinance, save the city quite a bit of money. That 2012 tax issue, if you recall, unlike the other tax that's out there that goes toward capital improvements, this one, everything over and above the principal and interest on the debt goes back to your general fund, so it's a true impact on your annual budget. So any kind of savings we could generate on this will have an impact on your annual budget. When we showed you back in the fall, interest rates had dipped down, and you can see, they immediately went right away. I mean, within a week, it was gone, there were no economic benefits. This far-right side, 95% of that immediate drop in interest rates is the fear of the coronavirus. Global economic slowdown, it's driven rates down to where today, for the first time, the whole spectrum of treasury rates is sub 2%, the handle, so the 30 years dropped down below 2%. So we're sitting there at a great opportunity again for this city to try to take advantage. When y'all gave us the go-ahead last month, usually it takes, you know, a while to put something together. Kevin sent out to me and to Shep an initial draft of a calendar of getting something together, and it showed us pricing bonds on March 23rd. It was like, that doesn't work. We'll lose this overnight if, once that coronavirus slows down, we expect rates to jump up significantly. So we've pushed your bond counsel, Shep, more than we normally could and would. He's gotten documents to us already. We've gotten those documents up to a bond insurance company in New York. Normally, it would take them two weeks, and I had them flip that in three days, so we've already gotten a commitment, and a commitment fee, and the commitment language on bond insurance. Normally, we would go to Standard &amp; Poor's, S&amp;P, and do an underlying rating, but that is, they're so backed up, that's going to be a full two-week delay in the process. Could it benefit us a little bit if we had an underlying rating of A+ or AA-? It could. We might save a little bit more on that with that S&amp;P fee, but that's at least two-plus weeks, probably three, of interest rate exposure. So we've taken the decision to bring to y'all tonight, we can, we're planning to, with y'all's approval, price these bonds next Tuesday morning. Your regular city council meeting is next Tuesday night. Come with you with the final results Tuesday night. So everything stays about the same right now. You'll see on this last page what we think the economics are gonna be. This second page, just real briefly, and we've been through this before, but this is the current outstanding 2012 bond issue, 2032 maturity. You can see on the far-right side, remember back in 2012, we'd just come out of the economic slowdown, y'all's sales tax actually had taken a nice dip in collections, and it just started to rebound. So unlike a normal bond issue where we set the same principal and interest every year, which would be level debt service, you can see on that far-right side, we kinda escalated per year $100,000. It kinda maximized what y'all could borrow at that time, but it still pays off in '32, and you can see down below, average coupon, right now, you're paying 3.75%. Next page. Sources and uses, these are all the fees and costs to get something done. There's three things that we have to hit. We cannot extend the debt, which we're not, without going back to the voters, we cannot extend the debt. We cannot issue interest rates that are higher than what you're currently paying, so we've met that goal, and we cannot issue more debt than is currently outstanding. You currently have outstanding 50.965 outstanding. We're planning to issue 50.54 million. Your sales tax collections are so strong with your rebound, we're actually going to do this deal without a debt service reserve. You don't need that. You've got almost three times revenue over principal and interest, three times coverage.
That's equivalent to PMI.
Exactly. You're well beyond the need for that on this transaction, so that allows us, in 2012, we actually had 2.9 million in a cash reserve that we had to set aside out of the proceeds of the bonds. We're gonna use that to downsize your debt. That helps a lot. The one thing you'll see down there, bond insurance premium, 18 basis points.
Use the whole 2.9?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Bond insurance premium, 18 basis points, a one-time fee of $107,000 to the bond insurer, and it gives you a AA-rated credit. So that's the economics, and you can see the hour fee, bond counsel, and all that. Recall, this is a-
Charlie, that's a misprint for the bond counsel. They added an extra digit on there, did they not?
I'll try to get him down a little bit before he comes up next Tuesday.
Yeah.
This is a taxable deal, not tax-exempt, so it's a little bit different animal, and different clientele that we're going out to, even brings in national or foreign firms that can actually invest in Springdale. We don't expect that, but it's a new spectrum of who would invest in Springdale. Third page, pricing summary. Again, not extending the debt, 2032. The key component to look at is the last line, the true interest cost. Based on today, and I actually had my analyst artificially increase the rates on this, 10 basis points, if we were pricing today, instead of a 2.64, it'd be 2.54. So we've got a little bit of cushion of market movement, structuring, and all that between now and next Tuesday, and still deliver kinda what you're gonna be seeing tonight. So 265, and that has some cushion in it. The next page, net debt service, yes, sir.
Is the, is that rounding amount, is that variable, or is that locked in?
The rounding amount of 2,700?
Yeah, 2746, that's just, that could-
Everything sells in $5,000 increments, so there's always some little bit left over.
Could go-
Up or down a little bit.
Yeah.
I've got in here, like miscellaneous, I've got $10,000 miscellaneous cost in there. Publication, these days, the newspapers, you know, to put in a, basically a 30-page ordinance, when we did it last time was $8500. I put in here $10,000. You know, the days of publishing on any day, I'm planning to publish on Sunday, the 30, Sunday the 1st, and close March 31st. So I've got some cushion built in all throughout there, not only the interest rates, but in those costs. I just kinda artificially said, eh, you know, we'll whittle that down as we get to pricing next week. That next-to-last page, net debt service schedule, the key thing to look at is, again, not extending beyond 2032. If you look at the far-right side, you can see those first five years are quite a bit lower, and then it goes right back to the same schedule you're paying right now. So first five years, on this last page, I'll show you the impact, but from that point forward, if you don't refinance, go back to the voters, if you don't do anything with the tax and just let it ride, it's budget-neutral from what you're doing right now. No impact on your budget.
Well, all right, almost could save us seven, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry?
Almost would save us seven versus, seven mil versus the levelized rate that we're paying now.
That's right. You'll look at the-
So that's really, when we're talking to the taxpayers, that's almost what we're talking about, is the kinda savings that we're looking at.
And if you look at the last page, it shows what that comparison is, and this is what you're gonna show your citizens, and we're always talking about, you're being good stewards of your taxpayers' money. This is no new tax. This is no extension of the tax. This is already something that's being paid, and it goes, if any kind of benefit you can generate on refinancing, take advantage of this market, goes right back to your general fund, and that right back into, you know, however you wanna use that, whether that's employees raises, equipment, you know, police cars, whatever that is, this last page, that savings column, and right now, it's, I'm showing you 711, $713,000 per year net, that's net after cost of issuance, so that's a true bottom line to your general fund for the next five years. We set it up this way to capture, we put a five-year call, always trying to give you as much flexibility and options on this, so we're gonna capture all the savings in the next five years. If you don't go back to the voters to put back into the community, if you just let this ride, you've already captured the savings, and it's, again, it's budget-neutral. If you do go back to the voters, and then this 2020 bond issue is rolled into a new deal for new capital improvements, you know the economics of this have been captured in those first five years.
So we can't, we cannot refinance for five years, though, right?
That's correct, five years. But consider, right now, we can't refinance the 2012 bonds until 2022.
On government.
So we were locked out, but the fact that these taxable rates have dropped down like they have because of what's going on, we're three or two years ahead of when we should be able to pay it off. So if something happened between now and five years, and as we were talking earlier, Colby, that, you know, what if rates, you know, we've seen some countries that are down at 0% interest. I hope we don't get down there, because we've got some real bad problems if they do, you know, but if, you know, we're right now looking at a, you know, two, and whatever I said, the 2.6, 2.5% interest rate, if it gets down to 1.5%, you're probably gonna see us knocking on your door again, going, there's more economics, there's more things we can do for you. I mean, that's our job, is to look out for you, to say, here's an opportunity to take advantage of. We're, again, if this was one of the deals like we've done for you in the past where there was a new money component, and that's the driving force, is we wanna deliver to your citizens this new money component in these projects, we might not push this as fast as we're doing right now, because that would be the driving force, is to deliver, you know, a long-term transaction. This is all savings-driven. This is all budget impact. So we've been pushing this thing faster than any deal I've ever done in my 34 years.
We could actually add that to the CIP instead of the general fund if we wanted to, of this 700K savings.
Yeah, it'll, it'll end up the same way, however you wanna use it.
Yep.
You're right.
Yeah, if we wanted to designate it that way.
You could, you could. There are a lot of things we could talk about, about how you'd wanna use it.
Yeah.
But bottom line is, it frees up between $700,000 and $800,000.
Per year.
That we're just throwing away to interest right now.
Yeah, that you don't have to pay some wealthy investors that own your bonds right now.
We're paying Shep Russell's fee from the last bond issues.
Well, he must be okay, because he hurried to get this done.
He's hungry, he's hungry.
So that's where we stand right now. Like I said, I've got some cushion in these numbers. If we price today, we're closer to $780,000 net savings per year. I would officially increase that 10 basis points, just to give us some cushion, so you know, you can just see the impact of rates moving. If something happens between now and next Tuesday, then, you know, then we know that we might come and report to you Tuesday, hey, we did not get it done, rates jumped on us again, and we're gonna hold back. We might come back to you and say, hey, we're at 600,000, you want us to price it next Wednesday? Right now, the plan is, Mayor, appreciate it. Right now, the plan is, Tuesday morning, we're gonna have a final offering document tomorrow, send it out to the investors, and get into the market Tuesday morning at 9:00. Hope to have it all wrapped up by early afternoon, and up here with final documents, that final ordinance that you saw in your package.
But the, like you said, with Corona scare, except the likelihood of a jump up any in the next-
Unlikely. Because you continue to hear, you know, new cases coming across, it, so it's, it has driven these rates down, and when that 30-year treasury broke through 2% again-
They're looking for another home for their money.
It's, it just, that's too much money to leave on the table to say, you know, if we held back another week or two, could we get it to 880?
Quarter.
We could, but that's why I included that chart on the first page, that's the 30-year treasury rate, and you can see in less than a week, it went through the roof. Everybody's trying to get in on the market right now. We have a captive audience next week, because there's nothing else lined up in Arkansas next week at this point. There are some national deals, some big names out there that we're pricing against, and we're being pretty aggressive pricing against them, so we might have to back up a basis point or two, depends on how it is, but it looks good right now.
What do you, what do you estimate the bond rating is without the underwriting?
I think on, on the deal we did in 2018, we got an A+, or AA-, I should've brought that, I think it was an A+. I think this transaction, because it is, your debt service is covered almost three times, you know, revenue, I think we get into the AA-, AA- category. We would not need bond insurance, we would not need that $100,000 fee, we'd have to pay S&amp;P $50,000. So we're leaving a little bit on the table right there, and Kevin and I had multiple discussions regarding that. The problem is, the minute we go down the avenue and tell Standard &amp; Poor's to come start their rating process, we're going to owe 70% of that fee, no matter, if we don't do the deal, 70%.
Cause money, cause they want it, so you're gonna pay them.
Yeah, so they're gonna do the work, and they're gonna get paid. I don't get paid, Shep doesn't get paid if we don't close a bond issue. I do not wanna come stand in front of yous, the city council, and say, citizens of Springdale, you're gonna pay $35,000 with nothing to show for it. And we left 700-something thousand dollars on the table, because we thought we could save you another $30,000, $40,000 per year chasing that rate. I don't think that, that risk-reward is worth it for Springdale, to be quite honest. That's why we've, we've been hitting this thing as hard as we can, and that's why we're, in that short amount of time, we're ready to price a week from now. So you're not, not looking for-
Is there any kinda action that we have to take tonight?
They're moving on, they'll, they'll give us the rating Tuesday and say, Fisher Cut Bay.
Moving on to the council meeting for Tuesday night?
Yes, sir.
And you'll have all the appropriate numbers to vote on then?
Final numbers, and like I said, if something, and you'll see rates, you can track it the next-
Will there be something on our agenda for the council meeting? Will there be an ordinance or resolution, or what would it be?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
An ordinance.
Okay, so we don't actually have an ordinance tonight, but we know basically what it's gonna be. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion of forward, a second?
And we really do have, we do have an ordinance, Jeff, we just don't have the exact numbers.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Ordinance with blanks.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's why it was-
Oh, I'm sorry, alright.
And those, all those blanks will be filled in.
Okay.
And like I said, if rates move on us, and if we're not in that 700,000-plus range per year, we might come back and report to you, here's what's going on, and do you want us to price it the next day? But if it's that 700-plus thousand per year, unless I hear otherwise, we'll try to get that locked in Tuesday morning.
Okay.
We could cut bond council's fee, we'd save another $100,000 a year, but that's just a detail.
I'll tell them that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the ordinance to council next Tuesday night. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. So, finance committee meeting last two weeks ago, I guess it was, at the end of the meeting, Wyman had presented the two different options as far as how to report the CIP income and expenditures, and so I thought, I thought it was understood at that time, we were gonna bring it back, yeah, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, thank you.
Thought we were gonna bring it back tonight and decide, or have further discussion at least, we were, give everybody a chance to look it over. It did not get put on the agenda, though. Ernest, so does that mean we can't talk about it, or what do you think? Is Ernest here?
Well, it's just, it's, I don't know what y'all discussed at the last meeting, because I was ill, so I don't know why you couldn't talk about it.
Well, it's basically just, we're-
Not forwarding anything to councils, but I-
No, we're just basically telling Laura and Wyman how we want to be reported.
Is that on our packet somewhere?
It was not in our packet. Were you at the meeting last?
I was not, I was not at county committee.
Oh, yeah, you were, I remember, but you got the, you got these two options, right? They were sent to you?
I did.
Alright, so do you wanna have that discussion tonight, or do you wanna, I mean, we need to decide something sooner or later, so we can wait till next time if you'd rather. Well, personally, I liked the way, and all of you know how I feel about reporting on the CIP, I liked the way option number two was presented to us, which is basically what I had talked about at the end of the, all of the budget process last year, asking that the $2 million that was transferred be shown, $2 million possible transfer out of CIP to the general fund be shown in our monthly reports, so that we know that that possibility is there, it doesn't mean we're gonna spend it. And so that's basically what option number two did. Option number one was more, a little more confusing, just because we hadn't done it before, you know, but I'm sure it's something we could learn, too, so. I think even if we decide to go with option number one, or have, you know, think about it further, that we at least for now oughta have our CIP reported to us like option number two suggested.
Reflecting the $2 million already be pulled out, in effect, which it would.
I like option two, it shows your $2 million, it also shows what's all left, but it also shows everything else, it's, all the other little accounts that we'd never get to see, so.
So what I was thinking is, at least for now, you know, it doesn't hurt anything to show it that way, show it that way, and if we wanna have further discussion about switching to option one, we can, later, if y'all think.
I like option number two. I think, I think one is gonna get a little too complicated, but-
I'm not sure we couldn't learn to do it, it's just-
Well, we could.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know that I like the idea of just pushing CIP into, into the general budget. I think this is, this is what we needed. I think it satisfies the questions that we had in budget time.
But at least it's a start.
Yeah.
So unless there's objection, Wyman, I guess we'll just go with option number two for now. I said, unless there's any further objection from the committee, will, you remember the difference between one and two last time?
Number two, basically, is like we've got now, except it has an additional report that shows the, all those miscellaneous accounts that had money in them.
Yeah.
And it showed the $2 million-
Right.
-pulled out, and it showed, and we expanded the revenue to show monthly collections, how much went in the CIP, and compared it to same last year.
So, so I think for now, we're just gonna ask you to do it like that for now.
Option two.
Okay, thank you. That'd be the end of the finance committee meeting.
We'll open the street and CIP, and there's only gonna be one, option, item three. Option two has been pulled, because it's come to find out we've already done that, so we've got that covered, so we'll go to option two, resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for construction of street, you know, turn it over to Wyman. Basically, it's a resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for construction of streets and sidewalks with milestone for $3,731,000. Wyman, you want us to talk, say anything about that? What was the question? The one on the contract-
Maximum price for the trails.
For the trails on, or the sidewalk and streets at Shaw Park.
Shaw Family Park.
Okay.
I think it's the construction management company's number, the milestone.
The sidewalks that are adjacent to the street improvements qualifies for street turnback, and the trails and sidewalks that aren't beside, uh, street improvements don't qualify for street turnback, has to be paid out of the park turnback. So there's a mixture of the two projects together, and we feel like it would be a lot more efficient if we had the same construction manager over both projects.
So this is the portion to be paid out of the bond, as opposed to the street turnback, is that right?
Correct, it'd be paid out of the street bond.
What were we estimating that to come in at?
Our first estimate was $4,440,000.
That's pretty good.
For the per, for the portion to come out of the bond, it was $4 million?
Yeah, the street bond.
And what you're saying is milestone is, we'll be doing both, well, the entire, both, yeah.
So if you're doing the sidewalk, we don't wanna have change contractors when you at various points.
Mm-hmm.
They'll bill it separate, but it'd be the same contractor.
Okay.
Have we, have we already passed the turnback portion?
Pardon me?
Have we already voted on the turnback portion?
We haven't used any turnback on, on this project.
So we'll probably capture savings on the turnback portion, too, by using milestone.
It could be used for the trails within the park, however, we've already appropriated all the available turnback in the 2020 budget.
So there is no more turnback money available for any street or sidewalk projects? It's already been allocated?
There's money in the street department budget for, that turnback for trails and sidewalks that's already allocated for specific projects, but it's allocated, there's no more to draw.
That's what I was asking, so it's already, it's budgeted, it's already budgeted into the budget, okay, alright, that was my question. Gonna make a motion to move this resolution forward with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
And motion, second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a like sign. That, that ends the street and CIP.
Alright, I'm gonna open up the police and fire committee. First off, we have a resolution authorizing the purchase of two police vehicles, and Chief Peters is gonna come and talk to us about that, how it's gonna be purchased.
Good evening. So in 2016, the Dodge dealership here in Springdale agreed to provide us with two vehicles for our school resource officers. It was a lease that they paid, and two years into it, the dealership sold, so they continued to make the payments. I didn't realize the lease was running out. I guess I, I didn't, it was very good of them to continue this relationship with us after they left town, but four years went by, and I kinda forgot about these cars, till we got notified by Chrysler Credit that the lease was up.
Want them back.
They said, turn them in or pay for them, so, so they, they sent us the invoices, and I got with our mechanics, and I said, what kinda shape are these cars in? And they said, they're in perfect shape. One of them has around 13,000 miles, the other one has about 22. So I'd like to buy these cars, trying to figure out how to pay for them. We lost a, I think it was December 27th or 28th, we had a, an accident, and we had an SUV that we wasn't planning on getting rid of, we were planning on keeping it for several more years, it was a 2015. It was totaled. We received that insurance money in January, so it's in the 2020 city budget. I'd like to move that money over and pay the difference out of our drug fund and buy these two cars.
And what's the difference?
$3,300?
No, that's the total.
Yeah, the-
That's the total cost.
It would be $15,511 from insurance, and $17,589 from the drug fund.
I'll move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Do you have a motion? Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
So just happen to have option number two in front of me, you probably don't have it, though, where Wyman was just talking about how he's gonna be reporting the different funds that, you know, we are always asking about, and this is one of them.
I had a really hard time understanding or hearing anything in this room.
Okay, well, we're, we're gonna be getting reports on the different funds, you know how we're always asking, well, is there this fund, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it shows it on here.
Okay.
I believe. It says, Police Department Drug Fund. Is it the one that's 118 right now?
So my last conversation with Laura, I- So, my last conversation with Laura, I believe we had around a hundred thousand, so it, it could, that could be accurate with a...
Okay.
Eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah, a hundred and eighteen.
And, and is there a limits, are there restrictions on how that money can be spent?
Yes, there is.
Can you tell us, or do you know?
Um, I can tell you that we can't spend it for, like, salaries or anything like that. We can spend it for police, we can spend it for police equipment, yes.
Radios, cars, etc.
Yes, yes.
There's another seventy-two thousand that can go, says municipal law enforcement equipment, also in addition to that other fund.
I don't wanna speak out of turn here, because I may not know what I'm talking about, but that may be the equipment fund that comes back from court fees.
Well, I tell you what, it'd be good if you've got copies of these things, too, probably, you know, so. Alright. So again, part of that money is drug money?
Yep, yes. Hundred and eighteen, less the seventeen something.
And then the other money is insurance money?
Yep.
Yes.
So, well, I'd still leave you around a net a hundred in there. That's what you was talking about.
The last time I checked, there was about a hundred thousand, which has been a month or two.
Well, this shows a hundred and eighteen, if you take it out. So basically, you'll have a hundred.
So is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Next on our agenda, we have, Peters coming up. We're gonna talk about a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Springdale Fire Department and the Johnson Fire Department. Chief, can you expel on that?
Mr. Chair and Council, thank you. Basically, what this is, is something that we've been doing for the past many years, even way before I was here, where when we have an accident that's called in on I-49 between exits sixty-nine and seventy, we respond to Johnson Unit. We ask them to come, because they can go northbound much easier than we can, and we go southbound. And depending on where it's at, the first one there gets to render care and begin. We were doing that for quite some time. It kinda dropped off, and we wondered why. But then when we started looking at the automatic aid agreement, and even the mutual aid agreement with Johnson, it's not in there. So that's why we're coming back before you. We wanna put that back in place, so that that, we can actually start doing that again. We had the same thing happen up in Lowell. It dropped off for whatever reason.
Well, Johnson until just this last year was a volunteer fire department, and now it's been taken over by the city.
Correct, correct.
But it's still operating under the same reciprocal agreement, though?
Yes, sir.
And again, it's non-binding?
It, it is. If they've got a unit available, they go. If we've got a unit available, we go. It's just like any of our mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. If we're available, we go. If not, we don't.
Are there any fees associated with that, that the cities pay for? Is it just...
There is not.
Just helping each other out.
Yeah. Basically, just erases the lines.
I'll make a motion, move the resolution forward.
Second.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Next thing we have is, report on billing for EMS services for the fire department. And Chief, could you talk about that, please?
I will. Basically, this was kind of an informative thing for you all. Basically, if you remember, back in, I think it was 2015, we started the ambulance billing service that we're currently with. They do all the billing for us. We had a pretty rocky road for a while, but it smoothed out, and they're doing okay. But that was a three-year contract that we had renewals for up to two years after that. We're past that now. So we thought we would reshop that and see if we can find a, a group that we think may fill that role a little bit better. We have done our due diligence and looked pretty hard. We think we've narrowed it down to a couple, and we, that's why we put out that request for proposal. But I wanted you all to be aware of that, so that when we come back to you asking for a contract, that, that is what it's all about, so.
That, that you all have, have checked the best possible service we could get, and...
That's correct. That's correct.
Is there any rate change?
There probably will be a little bit. We don't know for sure, because we don't have a contract yet. I'm guessing that we may see about a half a percent increase. But they're pretty much saying that we will collect enough to...
Cover that.
Exceed that, yes.
Any other discussion on this? It's just a report. There's nothing, no movement on this. We'll go to item seven, resolution adopting the Springdale Fire Department's strategic plan for the city of Springdale. And again, we've all had this, and I think we would all had a chance to look over it. Chief, could you hit the high points that, that we really need to hone in on?
Yeah, basically, if you remember, gosh, it's been almost six years ago now. We did our original strategic plan. You all adopted that. It went through 2019. We started this project, clerk, back in about May or June of 2019, so that we would have one ready to go with the first of the year 2020. We have thirteen strategic goals that are in there, and that's came from the citizens of the community, from our internal stakeholders, not only the city members, but also members of our organization. But basically, this is the guideline. And if you look at the thirteen in the back, and that's what I was talking to Chairman Powell about, is the fact that really what you all should be looking at is probably those thirteen goals in the back of that thing. Because that's kind of our guiding tools of where we're headed over the next one, three, five, and possibly even ten years, based on what those are after, so.
And this is for accreditation?
It is. It's one of the requirements for accreditation. But, you know, one of the things that I got when I first got here was, we didn't have a direction. The department didn't know where it was going. And certainly, I think that the strategic plan does lay that out. People can get that, look at it, and know exactly where we're headed, so.
This is a resolution. I wouldn't entertain a motion. I'm moving forward the resolution, Council, with a recommendation for approval. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed. I will close out this portion of the police and fire. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Anybody wanna take? Oh, I told... Mr. Lawson? Yeah, I told Mike I would. I'm not sure I know what I'm talking about, but we'll open up the Parks Committee, and, and, this is Richard Bowman. Richard had a request that he wanted to present to the city as to a plaque that had been previously placed at the...
National Guard Armory.
Yes, thank you. Can you tell us what we're talking about?
You bet. What this is, it, it's the National Guard. When we were deployed, B. Battery First, One and Forty-Second, National Guard Armory, in Springdale was deployed to Operation Desert Storm. When we got back in ninety-one, they made us a plaque. I'm gonna let you look at this and then pass it down. I already, we already have the plaque. I chased it down. It was put in storage. It don't need to be in storage.
Who made it?
I, I don't know who made it.
But I mean, who funded it?
Okay, what, it was our lady's support, our lady's support, auxiliary support at the, at the armory itself. And they had it put in a real nice thing down at the armory. Well, when the, the state took over the armory, and they built the new readiness center out by the airport, they, we had to take our plaque down. So we, they put it in storage somewhere. I tracked it down finally. Found it, and I've got it in my garage now.
Okay.
This year, being 2020, is the thirtieth anniversary of us leaving, the Saturday after Thanksgiving in nineteen ninety. So what I would like to do is put it down here in Memorial Park. And I've already talked to the people, some people that will help with the funding of it. Like the concrete work, I can get that donated, no cost to the city. This, if there's any cost at all, it's gonna be minimal to the city. We've got the plaque. I talked to Mayo Sheet Metal today, and I've got some, just little bit of rendering drawings, what I'm looking at to post or put it on. And they are willing to donate all the work that, that goes into it. So what I'm asking, where can I, where can we put it, or if we can, put it down there? Okay? This is, you can take these and pass them around. It's, the picture's there. It's, it's thirty-six inches tall. It's twenty-nine and a quarter inches wide. It's a half inch thick. And it don't have to be on something real fancy. But what I would like to know from you all at the city, is there stipulations that's going down there? Is there safety issues that I need to look at before I move forward? That's why I wanted to come to you this early. Until Thanksgiving, we've got a little bit of time to work with. So I talked to Mike about it, and then he said you, he wasn't gonna be here, and he filled you in a little bit on it. So...
Is this something that is mounted? Is it...
It, it will, there's, there is...
It's coming around. It'd be mounted on a post.
At an angle on a post.
It's coming around to you.
So just, your quick look at that. What, what do y'all think? What I wanna do, that's just with the, with the plaque naked around it. So definitely, I would have Mayo build something around it, and, and, and make it look nice. I'm not gonna do anything that's not gonna junk up the area. I want it to look nice. And, and the guys deserve it. We've had several that is on the plaque that have passed away since. So, that's, that's, I'll come.
Oh.
Chad, what's your thoughts? Well, Amelia's asking, what else is over there? What, what is it that we've got going with Jenny? You know, that...
What?
Jenny Lane, you know, the Veterans Association?
Well, I know they're working on it, but I don't know how far along this...
Have we, have we committed an area?
Yeah, we committed that area by J.B. Hunt Park.
Hunt Park.
J.B. Hunt, they were...
Hunt Park?
Yeah. They had a meeting, or they're having a meeting pretty soon, to try to get some money donated. And I guess it's gonna take a year or two, just to get it... What's wrong with putting it in Memorial Park out by J.B. Hunt Park?
Nothing.
Oh, this?
Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about right across the street here.
Right, across the street from American Legion.
Down by Trail or something.
Yeah.
This, this was...
Those other monuments are at down there.
This is where the young man did the project.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
About two years ago.
The little green wall down there.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's...
That's the boy that did the project, the Boy Scout guy?
Yeah, that, that makes the most sense, yeah. As long as the architects don't tear it down when they do the parking.
But, but, now, but this one, Mike, you, you was the batter, or the battalion commander
driver. He would've been on the plaque, but he didn't. He, he moved up in the world. He shunned us. He left us behind. You like that?
Yeah.
And, okay, what was we talking about?
The question, his question was, what have we...
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna bolt it to concrete with bolts, and it can be moved.
Yeah.
That's, it, it's just in that case right there. See, the one that we had, it's National Guard Armory, had real pretty rock around it and stuff like that. And when they tore this down, around the edges, they kinda messed the edges up. I'm gonna get it, what I can do, get it redone. But I wanna cover up the edges of it, because it was so put in there. They had to chisel it out.
Why don't you, why don't you just work with Chad and see if y'all can't find a place in that area, and then...
Yeah. They can come to us and say, here's where we'd like to put it.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright. Yeah, there's, there's, there's no opposition of having something like that out there.
Okay, good. I, I just wanted to make...
Wait just a second.
Wyman's saying that we're about to redo all that?
We're fixing it.
That was my point.
Shallow.
Exactly.
Not Memorial Park, though. Where the trail is?
Okay, you're across the street.
Yeah, we're across the street.
Okay.
It has, has that little area where there's some...
Yep.
You're across that street.
Yeah, yeah. That'll work. That, either side of the street's fine with it.
We're even gonna tear down the old Legion hut.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Perfect. Oh, thank you, guys. And good seeing you, Mike.
Yep.
And Jeff. Thanks.
What about everybody else?
Yeah, everybody else, thank you very much. I know you guys. And Mr. Powell, I think you're a veteran, too, right?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you for your service. Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
You bet.
So I guess that's the end of committee meetings.
Perfect.